This is an open meeting posted right there on the wall. As you come in the door is the actual open meeting act. If you would, please stand, join with us for a moment of silence and as well, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beth, if you'll continue with roll call.
Coy.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Miron.
Here.
Moaning.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
File.
Here.
All right. And I would ask for approval of the consent agenda, as was provided you in your packet.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second to approve the consent agenda, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And as well, a request for approval of the full agenda.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Approval of the full agenda with a second, again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay. We have a couple proclamations tonight. We'll start first with a proclamation as Student Nurses Day for February 8th, 2014. Whereas the Nebraska State Student Nurses Association's purpose is to assume responsibility for contributing to nursing education, helping to provide for the highest quality healthcare and programs representative of fundamental and current professional interests and concern; and whereas Nebraska student nurses are an important part of Nebraska's healthcare services, their skills and knowledge contributing to the prevention of disease and injury and the restoration of health; and whereas this profession faces certain changes in healthcare in the coming years, the association must and will strive to see that these changes are positive for this state and effectively adapt and conform to the laws of our state and nation through progressive education. Now therefore be it resolved that I Sue Fuickman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, hereby proclaim February 8th, 2014, as Student Nurses Day and urge citizens to take due notice of this observance. Is there someone in the audience to be here to take, come on forward and? Can I ask that you state your name for us, representing and?
I am Patrick Jesperson, and I'm currently a student at the University of Nebraska Medical Center, College of Nursing here in Norfolk. And I also serve as the Vice President on the Nebraska Student Nurses Association Board. And we're very excited to bring this year's convention to Norfolk this Friday. It's an excellent opportunity to have all students from across the state come and see northeastern Nebraska and the city of Norfolk.
Very good. Thank you for being here, and I know you'll be a great representation for the city of Norfolk too as well, so thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And next is a proclamation for the Joy of Reading Month. Whereas reading is a skill that only gets better with practice and is essential to a child's success in school; and whereas there's more to reading than homework and class assignments; and whereas there are an endless number of fun and interesting books out there waiting to be discovered; and whereas older students can use their influence to encourage younger children to read more; and whereas Norfolk Junior Optimist Okanagan International members believe that they can make a difference by encouraging their peers and younger students to read more books and thus improve their reading skills; and whereas the city of Norfolk values its young service leaders and their efforts to make a difference in our community by mentoring younger readers and promoting Catch and Release Books Program. Therefore be it resolved that I Sue Fuickman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2014 as Joy of Reading Month in the city of Norfolk, and I encourage all citizens to take due note of this observance. Mark, I see you here, and we have a couple young people that are going to come forward for us.
The proclamation was just logging up for the other.
Yep. If you want to go state your name for us and maybe have a few words on what reading means to you.
I'm Stacy Bright, and I think that reading's just a fun way to kind of know what you really like to enjoy, really.
Very good.
My name's Melissa Flores, and what reading means to me is being able to show how you express yourself through what books you read.
Very good.
My name's Oscar Garcia, and for me, reading is learning more.
Very good. All those are great. Who's going to accept the proclamation and take it back with you?
Can we take a picture with her?
Sure, we can do that. You're going to be the person who gets to carry it back? Okay. All right. You're done, Mark. All right, I see you. You're back. Okay, let's see. Under public hearings, hello, Trent. I'm giving him moments here, stumbling a little bit. A public hearing for the mayor and the city council to sit as a board of equalization to levy a special assessment against property located at 905 West Pazwalk Avenue for mowing, debris removal, and demolition costing the amount of $10,017.48. And first, I would ask for a motion to adjourn as mayor and council and convene as the board of equalization.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, we do have a motion with a second. If you will vote, please.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Trent can highlight any particulars of this, but one thing I wanted to point out is that when you see the $10,000 debris removal and the demolition costs, most of it is-
Can you hear?
Most of it is demolition costs, mayor and council, sorry about that. This is part of your program for property maintenance, continued property maintenance that one of your goals that you set last year to your council retreat, continuing to make progress. At times, we have properties in the community that need, are in desperate need of demolition, and this was one of those properties. So we were able to expend those dollars and then hopefully be in line to recoup those costs as we go forward. So I just wanted to highlight that for you because it's one of your council goals. And Trent, if you have any more particulars on that, please feel free to dive in there.
As mayor and council, as Shane already pointed out, most of this is a property maintenance mission that we've all had our eyes on, on multiple houses over the years. And actually, first off, I want to apologize for being late. I was on a rescue call, sorry. So I was stuck at the hospital. Anyway, this one here, 905, we had a lot of debris removal there and mowing. This address started about five years ago, when John Kova started first finding or trying to find the owners. There was three years of tax certificates that were sold on it, and then we never did locate an owner, so we had no one to go back on to. So it's a perfect example of money well spent that was, that we used and we had budgeted, so.
Okay. Any questions at all for either Trent or Shane?
I guess Trent sold, I mean, ideally when we sell this property, or then we'll recoup that money.
Yeah, I don't know how far we are in a pecking order on that, but with tax certificates sold, and I'm sure, who knows who all has money against that property, I haven't looked into that part of it at all. So I don't know how far we are on the list, but we are on the list, so, or will be.
We'd come after the general property taxes.
Did he take the words right out of your mouth?
Yeah.
Did he? Okay, all right.
Right in there.
Okay, if no further discussion then, I will close the hearing and ask for a motion to adjourn.
We can.
I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion with a second that we are adjourned and going back as city council. Again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and with that, then I would ask for consideration of adoption of Resolution Number 2014-5, levying a special assessment in the amount of $10,017.48 against property located at 905 West Pazwalk Avenue for mowing, removing weeds, incidental litter and debris from said property, and for property maintenance regarding condemnation and demolition of the structure.
Your Honor, I would offer consideration of Resolution 2014-5.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? If not, I would ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2014-5 is adopted.
All right. And next is a public hearing to discuss the 2014-20 through 2019 One and Six-Year Street Improvement Plan. I will open this hearing, and it looks like Mr. Miller is here to give us explanation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is your One and Six-Year Street Plan for the city of Norfolk. This is what we submit to the state for planning purposes, and if you look at your packet there, I want to remind you, first of all, it talks about the one and six-year plan. The one-year plan starts with the fiscal year starting October 1, 2014. So it won't be this construction season, it's next construction season, and then the following six years. So what happens this summer is not listed on this plan. This is a forward document. If you just follow down through that list a little bit, items one and two and four and five are standard items that we have in there. One and two is the one year and then the following five years of the maintenance contract money that we have in there for the city of Norfolk. And those are kind of determined year to year depending on what streets need the most repair, and that kind of changes. We have a list that we try to work through, but of course, as things come up, deterioration happens quicker than we anticipated, we modify and change those. And that's the things, the contracts then shall approve separately as it goes forward year to year. And then, of course, item number two then is that same money going farther out for the next five years. Items number four and five are the same thing for paving districts. We put money, we set aside money separately in case there's a new housing development that comes, so that's the city of Norfolk's share for intersection costs or any particular costs that we have to participate in with any housing subdivisions that come to the city of Norfolk. Item number three, backing up one item, is 8th Street from Michigan Avenue South to Omaha Avenue. We've had that in there for a number of years. A couple of years ago, we did do some selective replacement and some repair on that, and so we have moved that back to kind of see how that worked, see if we pretty well have taken care of that problem. We do have that money out there in '16, '17, but again, that need may change, and 8th Street may or may not be the street that actually gets the repair done to. Item number five is, oh, I'm sorry, item number six is a box culvert down on South 5th Street, which is near the new baseball fields that goes over Corporation Gulch. Currently, there's a single culvert that goes through there, and a couple of years ago, when we had our flood through there, we had some damage to that road, and so this is replacing, in an effort to start working on that road, this will be the replacement of that, from a culvert to a box culvert. Items number seven is a portion for this coming, the 14, '15 year, for our share of the state's roundabout at 37th Street and Norfolk Avenue. Item number eight, you can see out there, starting in 2016, we begin to contemplate the widening of Benjamin Avenue from 1st to 13th Street, from a four lane to a five lane. And lastly, number nine, we have, starting in the next year and the following year, we've broken it into two pieces, the reconstruction of that Norfolk Avenue Bridge near Hyve East. We are waiting for a bridge inspection report that may or may not dictate exactly how we repair or replace that bridge. And so that's in works, it's coming. They've told us it's completed, they're kind of finishing it up, and they'll be sending it to us. So in the next 30 days or so, we'll begin to see some options on that particular bridge.
Gary, we're getting that report from whom?
J O is doing the bridge inspection, of course.
Gary, is that number you have in there that, does that represent the highest cost, the lowest cost, we think?
We think so. We think that's the highest cost there. We asked them for, they alluded to the fact that there may be some repairs that could be done, that could extend the life of that bridge, and so we asked them to provide those to us, some cost estimates along with those, and we'll kind of have to look at those and see how extensive the repairs are, what the costs end up being for us, and where we really want to move with that.
Item number seven, 37th Street and Norfolk Avenue, is, you know, there's a little bit of controversy under that item. Is that a done deal? I mean, is that, I mean, as we're moving forward here, I-
Well, that's a good question, Councilman. You know, I don't know if anything necessarily is a done deal, but it's definitely deep into the planning phase with the state in Nebraska, and, you know, experiences that they've had with roundabouts across the state really become particular in that argument for or against. And oftentimes Norfolk's held up as example of successful roundabouts, and we've crossed those controversial bridges before, obviously in our past, and now we have, in my opinion anyway, it's a success for operating, fairly successful. So this one would be similar to the one on the eastern side of our community that is just getting its feet underneath it, and so far, so good. We haven't had a rash of accidents or a rash of complaints, at least to my knowledge, on that roundabout. So those kind of experiences usually dictate your future progression towards additional roundabouts, so that's best I can do for an answer. I don't know if that answered it completely, but.
You answered it with not really answering, but that's fine.
Kind of rounding around.
Yeah, good job.
Any other?
Kind of answered it in a roundabout way.
And that works, right? Any other questions?
Just one, Gary, on item one and two, this year I see our general miscellaneous maintenance is at 400, and then as we progress out, then the rest of the years, it's at 650, is that just projected, or, I mean, you might want to touch on why the difference is?
Yeah, what we do there, and of course, remember, this is for the, this will be like the summer of '15. To get our budget to balance a little bit, we cut that back because we've got some pretty major repairs that are going to happen this summer that we don't have the bids back for yet. So in order to keep the budget in balance, we cut that number down in anticipation of what we think this summer's projects may come in at. So that number can change. We anticipate, once we get the budget, the bids back for this summer's projects coming in. This summer, we're doing a pretty large overlay project, and we've kind of projected that cost, and we kind of want to be on the safe side there a little bit. So we did cut that down. Okay. To answer Councilman Klaassen's question a little more directly, we've made a commitment as a community to the state of Nebraska that roundabout to be built. So from that aspect, it's done. And I guess what I mean when it's never done until it's done, it's never done until you put the roundabout in and it's operational. I suppose you could always, you can always make an argument against anything and sometimes be successful, but we have as a community made a commitment to the state of Nebraska that that roundabout will be going in at that location.
Well, with that stated, would you, you know, the 2.7 roughly set aside for this, how much of that would you think contributes to the overall cost? I guess what I'm getting at is, how much say do we actually have if the state's coming in and paying a significant amount for this improvement over there? You know, I think maybe that would be one way to look, you know, you've got 2.7, the project's a $10 million, I mean, do we, you know what I'm saying, of a percentage of costs?
That's why they ask for those commitments upfront, you know, as a community, they want to know where you're at with those kind of things. And our success, again, are what I think is obvious success with roundabouts in our community would say that we're committed. So do we have an, do we, could we cause a bunch of roadblocks to be thrown up? Sure, if we didn't make that commitment, but since we made that commitment, I don't think we're going to have much impact on the decision-making any further than we've already, we've already committed to.
Yeah, I mean, you're not reading me right, but what I'm getting at is, how much of the overall project cost do we contribute to?
I can answer that. We have 10% of the cost of this project. I think the other 90% is coming from the federal highway system as a, it's a safety project is where the funding's coming from. If it wasn't for a safety project, we would be way down the list on priorities with the Department of Roads, I think. But it's a safety project, and those are typically 90, 10. There may be a little bit, we may not be a full 10% of the total project because the southwest corner isn't in the city limits, but the others, I guess everything on the south side isn't in the city limits, north side is. But the entire road intersection is in the city limits, so I think we're probably paying for a full 10%.
So when something like this comes up and you have the state identify a potential hazard, I guess, if they're saying it's 37th and Norfolk Avenue, if they identify something like that, you're willing to, do they come in with the design phase, you know, like say, this is what we see as a potential improvement of safety, and then, like you said, if you agree to that, then you kind of get bumped up the list for the improvement?
Yeah, this all started, this project probably really goes back to when they were having the public hearings for the four lane that extended to Battle Creek, because the four lane extended out through the intersection of 37th Street, and then it went back into two lane, out past Divas, and then on to Battle Creek. And when they came in and were doing public hearings and processes on that, the public were saying, 37th Street's a problem. We've had accidents there, we've had some fatalities there, you need to do something. Well, it was outside of the scope of that particular project, but it got it on the radar where they went back and started looking at the accident data and some of that, and were able to get enough justification that it would qualify for a safety project. So that's where they started moving it forward, came in and looked at, and they've been talking about this for about five years, you know, off and on, and so they're going to do a roundabout there, that shoe fly, where you go straight out Norfolk Avenue, that's going to be closed also. So if you're going to Battle Creek, you'll have to turn south there at the hospital and go down to the highway and get back on. And the reason for that is the safety aspects of the merging of that shoe fly lane and 34th Street right off the end of it. People will pull over for you to get onto the highway and then come back in front of you to turn on the 34th Street. So it's just, you know, and 34th Street's probably the thing that's causing the problem there, not the shoe fly, but we're dealt with 34th Street, so the solution is to take it out.
Thanks, Gary.
And those were, that was on the December 16th city council agenda, is when that agreement was approved.
Okay, any other questions? If not, then, are you done, Gary? I sure don't mean to short you off. Anything else you want to add?
If there's any other questions.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. How about a planning commission report, Beth?
The Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the city of Norfolk 2014, 2021 and six-year street improvements plan on January 22nd, 2014, as presented by the operations manager. The Norfolk Planning Commission recommended approval of the one and six-year street improvements plan.
All right, and with that, I would close this hearing then, and ask for a consideration of approval of Resolution Number 2014-6, approving the 2014-2019 One and Six-Year Street Improvement Plan.
Your Honor, I'd move approval of Resolution 2014-6.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2014-6 is adopted.
Okay, and next is a public hearing at the request of Leroy J. and Louise Torkelson for a zone change from R1 to OD at 1201 North 13th Street. I will open this hearing and look to, Trent, are you talking to this?
Mayor and council, this was brought to our attention, they would like to sell this property. It's a small property, it's an old vet clinic there by Bel Air Nursing Home, and put a small business in there, just about, I think, four, four or five, I'm looking back here at, I don't remember what you said, three to four, okay, so three to four offices, so in order to do that, it had to go to an office district. It, parking wise, it's going to fit, there's no room for an expansion there. If he gets too big, then obviously he'll have to look for a bigger building, but, and hopefully that is the case, so. But for now, it, we had no problem with it, so.
Courtney, you're really teaching economic development well in this community.
It's Courtney's fault.
Yeah. Anything anyone else wants to speak to? This is certainly, excuse me, a public hearing, so if you want to come forward and speak to it? Okay. Any discussion by this group at all, questions? Okay. With that then, do we have a planning commission report?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing at the request of Leroy and Louise Torkelson for a zoning change from R1 Single Family Residential to OD Office District at 1201 North 13th Street. The Torkelsons want to sell the building that has been a veterinarian's office since 1954 and has been, and has been zone R1. In order to sell it, they need to rezone to OD, and the potential buyer wants to relocate his financial planning office there. The planning commission recommends approval of the zone change on an eight to zero vote.
Okay, and with that, I will close this hearing and ask for consideration of ordinance number 5281, approving the zone change from R1 Single Family to OD at 1201 North 13th Street.
Your Honor, ordinance 5281 on first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion, any further discussion at all? Hearing done then? Short time, Beth.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, with that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5281 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5281 on second and third.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to approve on second and third, suspending the rules. Is there any further discussion at all? If not, then again, please vote.
Council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5281 carries on second and third.
Okay, good luck to you. Thanks for being here. All right, and a regular agenda, we're looking for consideration of ordinance number 5282, amending section 2-5 of the code to update the city's comprehensive fee schedule to include a fee for obtaining a replacement parking tag for rented parking stall. I'm looking for a motion for consideration.
Your Honor, I had to introduce ordinance number 5282.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Lynn, I think we're going to look to you to give us information on this.
What this does is basically creates a $25 fee if it becomes necessary to replace one of the parking tags that's being utilized, showing that you're authorized to park downtown. I think the reason that this came to me and then on to you with the $25 amount is that if some, if someone has that parking tag issued to an employee or somebody that's using it, and they don't make arrangements to get it back, and that individual moves on, they're still going to be authorized to park there. That parking tag they have is still going to be valid, and therefore, while you don't want to be too pricey, you want people to treat those with some respect, so it doesn't create problems down the way. And so, you know, it's kind of like they don't want the soup to be too hot or too cold, you want it to be just right, and the notion would be that the $25, maybe that's just right.
Okay, any discussion by this group? Do you think it's too- Do you think it's too hot or too cold? If I'm not hearing any discussion, then Beth, do you have a short title for us?
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section two dash five of the official city code to include a fee for obtaining a replacement parking tag for a rented parking stall, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty two eighty two carries on first reading.
Your honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty two eighty two on second and third.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend and pass this on second and third reading. If no further discussion, I would ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty two eighty two carries on second and third.
Okay. Consideration of committing three point six million dollars of L B eight forty funds to Project Envy, Tejas Tubular, under specific terms to be determined upon completion and submittal of an L B eight forty application to the city of Norfolk. Looking for a.
I'll make the motion, your honor.
Second.
We have a motion in a couple of seconds. You're going to come forward, Courtney, and give us a little information on how this will all work. If I, having you here, Scott, let me first of all say, appreciate your being here. And on behalf of this entire group of us elected officials, we appreciate, and Courtney, and the staff, certainly appreciate the support that you've given to us with our L B eight forty efforts and moving with us right along with Project Envy. It's been a very important piece, I think we all agree. And so give our thanks to your executive board for all the efforts on this, Scott, and all your members. So thanks for being here and thanks for all the support in these past couple of years. It's been great.
Okay, projects of this nature must remain confidential until the point at which we can announce them publicly. However, commitments must be made in advance in order for the project to progress to that point. That's the role of the Economic Development Subcommittee of the council, to thoroughly vet projects and determine the appropriate level of involvement from the city with the advice and counsel of staff. And so what you have in front of you today is us requesting that the full council ratify the actions of the Economic Development Subcommittee in recommending that we extend three point six million dollars of L B eight forty funds to Project Envy and Tejas Tubular. These funds are essential to bringing this project. It's one hundred million plus investment, two hundred plus jobs, and a new natural gas line into the community. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have. They're working on their L B eight forty application as we speak. Randy and I and Candace Bosserd sat down with them a few weeks ago. So they're putting together all the documents, and it will come back in front of this council then for a final vote. But any questions that you might have?
Courtney, do you want to explain how that three point six million number came to be?
Yeah, this project required natural gas. There was, there's no way we can recruit any industry into the community without an adequate natural gas supply. And we were fully subscribed, we were at capacity. In order to make this project economically feasible and help offset some of the costs that the prospect would have to pay to bring in that natural gas line, we had to make a commitment, the state made a commitment, together totaling five million dollars. And then there were additional commitments made to help offset some of these costs. And that's above and beyond what the prospect would, I guess I can say it out loud now, Tejas Tubular, since we've announced, I've been conditioned for the last year to not say it. This is in addition to what they will be putting in to the construction of this natural gas line. What some people may not be aware of, utility companies can't go out prospectively and build without a customer at the end of the line. And the costs are put generally solely on the customer. And so in order for this project to happen, and in order for us to get natural gas to our community, we're extending L B eight forty dollars, and the state is putting funds into this as well.
Courtney, can you briefly touch on the L B eight forty dollars and how they're obtained? So, you know, this was passed almost four years ago, and what a big deal it has become for our community. I think maybe kind of refreshing everybody's mind.
Yeah, L B eight forty was passed in two thousand and ten. And as Mayor Sue said, in large part due to the efforts of the Norfolk Area Chamber of Commerce. We collect a little over four hundred thousand dollars a year in property tax. So we're three years into the program, we have another seven years. We have had a couple of successful projects with smaller amounts of L B eight forty funds. But when an opportunity like this came along, staff and the E D. Subcommittee realized that this would really truly give us the biggest bang for these dollars. Without natural gas, we were stymied. There wasn't a possibility for us to recruit a large industrial customer. The stars really aligned on this project because Tejas Tubular wanted to be located next to New Core and was willing to wait and to take us on our word that we were going to get them natural gas in partnership with Black Hills Energy. So three point six million is a worthwhile investment on a project of this size alone. But in order for us to get the natural gas too, it's a, it's a huge win for the citizens of this community. And without L B eight forty dollars, this project truly wouldn't have come together.
So what does that do to our L B eight forty balance?
Well, we will have no more L B eight forty funds after this. However, we will have natural gas, and that's something that I can work with. Having a little bit of L B eight forty funds to entice an industrial prospect is very important. Having it to spend on other projects like industrial site development is very important. But without natural gas, we weren't moving forward. So this is a big piece of the economic development puzzle, and we'll work around the fact at this point in time that we won't have additional funds.
Okay, I think you clarified anything and everything that the citizens might have questions on. And certainly, you know, it's been a long year and a half of work that's been done with great staff assisting through this all, and certainly your efforts. Both the Candaces have been right there with you, and Shane's led the charge as well, keeping everybody committed to what it was. So it's a partnership that, to me, was just really, one that I never really felt could come together in the way that it did. Talk about public, private, and the, the group of, from Black Hills working just hand in hand was phenomenal. So congratulations to you, to the girls there, and to us. And with that, is there anyone else that might have any comments on what it is that we're doing?
My name is Scott Williams, and I'm representing the Norfolk Area Chamber tonight. And I'll use one of, some of Clint's words from earlier. I think this is a project that is not too hot, not too cold, it's just right. Maybe I'm paraphrasing, killing it there, but, and pardon the pun when I use the word hot with gas, but. Anyway, the, the chamber took the lead, or took a lead role in raising the money to support the campaign for passing the L B eight forty initiative. And thank you for clarifying the date on that, in two thousand and ten. It allows, obviously, to do, use the money for economic development and, and infrastructure improvements. And, and this is just the kind of infrastructure that, that we need, needed to, to basically reinvigorate Norfolk's economic development horizon and, and get us moving forward in that direction. So to help Tejas Tubular get here and get these two hundred plus jobs that they're, they're bringing with them, the Norfolk Area Chamber supports your use of that money. I don't pretend to speak for all of our members, because I, I can't speak for all of them, but I can speak for our board, and we wholeheartedly support the, the use of these, of these funds. So, I mean, if you're going to vote tonight, I would say vote for it. If you're going to vote some other night, I'm encouraging you to vote for using this money, so.
Appreciate that, Scott. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Anyone else that may want to speak to this?
I just want to point out that a few years ago, we did vote on L B eight forty, and it was a tough decision for the citizens. The citizens did vote that we get this. If we wouldn't have had this, we would have been behind the eight ball all the way on this, trying to get caught up to get the natural gas, and we probably wouldn't have got it because we wouldn't have been able to pass it and get the funds fast enough. So it's really good that the chamber took this, the citizens got behind it, and we have built up a fund in the last three years to get this much money. So it was a, it's a team effort for all of Norfolk, and it's, it's paid off, and it will pay off, so.
I, I just wanted to say to Dave's point, without L B eight forty, this project wouldn't have happened. Because L B eight forty gives us the ability to use tax dollars on private ventures. Without the L B eight forty, we, this, this project would have never happened, period. So.
Absolutely right.
Kudos to the city of Norfolk, and just a great job. I said, I said to Scott Zaruba the other day, it's the perfect storm. It's what we needed, it's what Tejas needed, and the horizons, infinite horizons for Norfolk, I feel.
This is a, certainly a catalyst for a lot of things to happen. In the community, with, with this type of development, we're going to need housing, we need more workers. The college is going to step in and, and provide education for those types of jobs. And, and, you know, we talk about economic development being like a stool with several legs, and we've certainly got one solid leg under this stool with, with more to come. And I, I couldn't be any happier. It is what the community voted for back in two thousand and ten, and, and you've done a great job delivering. Everybody has. It has certainly been a group effort. It's just, it's just a pleasure to see, couldn't be happier.
Okay, well, are we ready to vote? What, do you want to ramble a little bit longer? What is it? Okay, let's vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, I missed one item on the agenda, and that is the Edward Verzal Award that's coming up the end of this month. Nominations are now being accepted for the Edward I. Verzal Outstanding Citizen Award. And if I understand right, those go directly to the city office, right? Those nominations, and then they will be turned over to the group that makes the final decision. So think of those out there that, and I believe there's a listing of those that have already received that, if I'm not mistaken, maybe on the website. So that being said, we're sure looking for recommendations from any and all. And with that, we're adjourned.